Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennsylvania County Planning Commission regular meeting, Tuesday, October 7th. The time is 7:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Shelton. Ms. Meese. Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Oaks?
Here.
Ms. Henderson?
Here.
And Mr. Harker?
Here.
Please stand and join me for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Belief. Hearing of the citizens, is there anyone here tonight to speak to this board regarding a matter not on our agenda?
No, sir. No one signed up.
The floor is open for a motion on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Henderson. Please cast your vote when prompted. Agenda is approved. Five in favor, zero against. Floor is now open for a motion on the minutes from our last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion and we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Brown. Please cast your vote. Minutes are approved. Five in favor, zero against. Chairman has nothing new to report tonight, and we'll get right into our cases for the month. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance, and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we're charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, comprehensive plan, and in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding these zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:04, case R-25-023 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-023, Beth Ann James has petitioned to rezone 15.516 acres located on State Road 882 West Sunrise Drive in the Tunstall Election District, R1 Residential Suburban District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for a micro-resort, retreat center, and event space. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Beth Ann James is here to represent the petition.
Ms. James? Good evening. Please, when you get to the microphone, please state your name for the record.
Weston James.
Okay. How do you spell that, sir?
W-E-S-T-O-N-J-A-M-E-S.
Gotcha. Thank you. Do you have anything to add to the packet? Anything you'd like to say tonight?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to start off and say that folks can be so intransigent, and I want to keep our eyes open to the fact that we are a prize of mothers, sons, grandfathers, just like any other family-owned business. We're not a conglomerate looking to suck money from the community resources. We're a family business looking to pour into the community, add on, and make money, but also make the community great, thrive. And we still have family members 10-mile radius from the event space, so we are deeply invested in making sure this is profitable. It's just an all-out positive for the community, everybody around, and that we bring well-to-do people to stay and to hopefully massage and increase the economy, bring people to spend their money on the things that are here in our community, family businesses, the country store, so I feel like this is a net positive for the community, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. James. Appreciate it. We have some others that would like to speak.
We did.
Okay.
Excuse me, I think it says Katina Myers. Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, sir. My name is Katina Myers of the Tunstall District. At this time, my family and I, residents of West Sunrise Drive in particular, are deeply concerned about the safeguarding of their property values amidst the proposed changes of the rezoning in our area. We just have a couple of concerns. One, land value. Two, the community or the customers that are going to be right behind my home and the next lot over. Just environmental impact to the environment, to Dry Fork. I don't know if you've ever noticed the bridge in Dry Fork, but right now it's not as full as it used to be due to all the trash and other things that are happening in our community and on our road. I don't want to take up too much time. The bulk of our concern is our property value, just the lack of the community input as far as knowing what was basically going to be built in our backyard, and how that impacts our land value.
All right.
And I may add, I also have 101 signatures to petition the rezoning of the land.
Okay. All right, you can share that with clerk. Thank you.
My name is Calvin Yarborough from the Tunstall District. I'm here to add that my mother, who is 102 years old, lives right up the street from the resort. It's owned by myself and my brother own. She lives in that house now. We grew up in that area. I'm very familiar. As a matter of fact, I'm a part of the team that's working to build Echo Valley. I think all of your concerns can adequately be addressed, and will adequately be addressed. I'm very comfortable. I've had input. I'm very comfortable with where they're going, what the project would be offered to the community. I'm very comfortable and confident that would enhance the property values. And again, as I said before, the other concerns that the young lady had, I think they will be adequately addressed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. James? LaSellis? I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Please state your name.
Appreciate the opportunity to talk about Echo Valley. So, you know, this is a family project.
Could you state your name for the reference?
Yes, LaSellis James. Right. This is a family project. We intend to create an environment where people can spend time with family, whether that be for family reunions, or just people looking for an opportunity to retreat, back to nature. These are going to be glamorous camping zones, not, you know, traveling vehicles that are parked up. You know, this is an opportunity for people to come and spend time together with family. Though this is a micro-resort, meaning it's a small one, it's not a large resort, I believe that the impact on the property, on the land, is going to be very minimal. There's not going to be a need for any traffic studies or anything like that because we're looking at a maximum of maybe 15 units, housing maybe two or three people. It's a seasonal business, so we don't see a situation here where, you know, people are going to be inundated in the community with traffic and a lot of different people. The intent of this business really is to support our family and other families in this area that may have families that are out of town, and when they come in town, have a place to stay, right? Each of our units can have its own bathroom and a kitchenette with ample bedding and a deck, just for people to spend time together, quality time. So, you know, again, this is a family business, and we expect this to be a net positive for the community.
All right. Thank you, Mr. James.
That's all that signed up, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is anybody that didn't get a chance to sign up that wanted to speak?
All right. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. You got it. A lady raised her hand.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you come forward, ma'am?
Please state your name.
Victoria Chumley. I just want to say, the resort in itself is a good idea, but not in this area. This is a residential road. Yes, they have family in the areas, but so do other families, and it was just bought up so hastily that we had no idea what was going on until we got this idea, and then, but like I said, it's just, it's a residential area, and it's getting more residential by the minute. I don't think a resort or a campground, which is what their permit will be approved for if they get this approved, is what we need in our area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I would like to say something. Good. Tonight, you know, we just changed the zoning on that property, and they'll have to come back, and it'll probably be December, January, for a special use permit to put these, start the resort. And for the people that came in with petition, we need to work out something so further on down the road, if things don't work out, y'all will be protected as far as noise, alcohol, stuff like that. And so, we need to get some, something worked out to where Ms. James can do what she wants to do with the James family, but it'll also protect the neighbors. And so, we're going to try to look out after everybody's interest.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Oaks. At 7:13, public hearing is closed in this case. Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chairman, in case R-25-023, I make a motion that we change this property from R1 to A1.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Henderson. Motion carries. Five in favor, zero against. At 7:14, case R-25-024 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-024, Jeffrey Dixon has petitioned to rezone 12.42 acres located on State Road 845 Hill Creek Road in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for farm use hemp production. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, Jeffrey Dixon is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Dixon?
My name is David Dixon. Jeffrey Dixon is my brother. He's a few years older. And we grew up on this land. It's surrounded by agricultural. We have a farm on the one side of the road. Our land is on the other, and in back of it is farmland. To the side is farmland. It was farmland until in approximately the '90s, and then it was rezoned to residential for reasons unknown. I'm not sure. But in any case, we're going to try to improve the forest and plant trees in the area, some trees that was naturally grown, such as salmon trees and what have you that was eradicated by pest, but we're going to try to reestablish those type of trees, walnut trees, and we just want to try to redevelop the land.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Appreciate it. Anyone else signed up?
No, sir.
All right. At 7:16, public hearing is closed. I accidentally closed my screen out. Don't straighten me out. And then I will give it back to you, Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-25-024, I make a recommendation that we change the zoning on this property from R1 to A1.
All right. Motion by Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Brown? Motion carries. Five in favor, zero against. At 7:18, case R-25-025 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-025, Joyce Rimmer has petitioned to rezone 8.62 acres located on State Road 834 Hollywood Road in the Callens-Gretner Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for manufactured home and to consolidate with an adjacent property already zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ms. Rimmer, as well as her son, Mr. Haskins, are here to represent the petition.
All right. Swimmer? Do you, y'all have anything you'd like to add or say?
The only thing we want is just to get the residential back into agriculture.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, sir.
All right. At 7:19, public hearing is closed. Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chairman, in case R-25-025, I make a recommendation that we change the zoning from R1 to A1.
Motion by Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Motion carries. Five in favor, zero against. 7:19, case R-25-026 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-026, Trudy Northrup has petitioned to rezone 35.41 acres located on State Road 622 Cascade Road in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for livestock. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Trudy Northrup is here to represent the petition.
All right. Ms. Dolph?
Good evening. Hello.
Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Um, this is my homestead. I was raised there, and I had cows in the backyard when I was a little girl, and I'd like that now for my grandchildren.
All right.
So, we're going to keep it in the family.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Dolph. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else here speak to this case?
No, sir.
All right. 7:21, public hearing is closed. Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chairman, in case R-25-026, I make a recommendation that we change the zoning from R1 to A1.
Motion by Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Henderson. Thank you for that. Motion carries. Five in favor, zero against. Oh, goodness. Case R-25-027 is now open for public hearing.
Case R-25-027, David Dixon has petitioned to rezone 12.33 acres located on State Road 845 Hill Creek Road in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for farming. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet, and Mr. Chairman, David Dixon is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Dixon, do you have anything that you want to add?
No.
Okay. Appreciate you being here tonight. Anybody else signed up?
No, sir.
All right. 7:22, public hearing is closed. Uh, Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chairman, in case R-25-027, I make a motion that we change the zoning from R1 to A1.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Motion carries. Five in favor, zero against. 7:23, case R-25-028 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold?
Case R-25-028, Henry Hurt Jr. has petitioned to rezone 1.67 acres located on State Road 798 Old Red Eye Road in the Callens-Gretner Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for a second dwelling. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Clement Hurt, Mr. Hurt's grandson, is authorized to represent this application. He did notify me ahead of time. He unfortunately is not available tonight. I am happy to answer any questions related to this application that you all may have.
All right. Is there anyone else here tonight speak to this case? All right. Any of you guys have any questions? 7:24, public hearing is closed. Mr. Oaks?
Mr. Chairman, in case R-25-028, I make a motion that we change the zoning from R1 to A1.
Motion by Mr. Oaks. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Henderson. Seconded by Ms. Henderson. Motion carries. Five in favor, zero against. 7:25, case S-25-021 is now open for public hearing. Mr. Arnold.
Case S-25-022, Eric Grabowski has petitioned for a special use permit on 3.326 acres located on Tracy Drive in the Bannister Election District to allow for a manufactured home. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Grabowski is here to represent the petition.
Good evening.
How you doing?
All right. How are you? If you have anything that you'd like to say?
I don't. I just want to thank everybody.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone signed up?
No.
Speak to this one. All right. Thank you. 7:26, public hearing is closed. Ms. Henderson. Chair, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, in the case of R-25-028, I'd like to make a proposal that we recommend to the Board of Zoning Appeals that this be recommended for change.
All right. Motion by Ms. Henderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brown.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I believe we need to clarify that case number.
Again, yes, the case number is S-25-021. Thank you.
The motion is approval, a recommendation of approval to the BZA in case S-25-021. Seconded by Mr. Brown?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Motion carries. Five in favor, zero against. Any old business, Mr. Arnold?
Well, I'm not quite sure if it'd fall under old or new business. I'm going to throw it in under old, if that's all right. It relates to the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
The Board of Supervisors earlier this afternoon during a special call meeting did go ahead and award that project two line and grade.
All right.
So that will go ahead and commence very soon.
Yep.
And thank you all very much for all your effort and support in working with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Any new business? Good? All right. Everybody ready to go home? 7:28, we're adjourned.
How you doing, Mr. Oaks? You a busy man tonight?